I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for November 4th, 2024. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our own.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
And Commissioner Banky. All commission members present except for Commissioner Banky.
May I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Banky?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
And Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, we are going to be doing something a little out of order. We are going to be approving the agenda and it's because an amendment is needed and it involves proclamations, which we typically do before we do our work-study session. So may I get a motion to up, to amend the agenda and approve it with the addition of two proclamations? One for the Adrian High School State Championship Equestrian Team and one for a Veterans Day proclamation.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
And Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Motion carried.
At this time, we will now present the proclamation for the Adrian High School State Championship Equestrian Team. If they would like to come up with their coach, I don't know if our superintendent of Adrian Public Schools wants to come up as well and the athletic director, but anybody that wants to come up for this proclamation. All right, before I do this proclamation, if you would introduce yourself.
Liliana Gentek. Eleanor Ott.
John Birdwell. Oh, I'm the coach.
Chad O'Brien, I'm the athletic director.
Nate Parker, superintendent.
Whereas three years ago, the Adrian High School Equestrian Team formed with Liliana Gentek and Coach John Birdwell asking Eleanor Ott in 2020, sorry, adding Eleanor Ott in 2023 with the team winning a regional title. And whereas Liliana Gentek, you have a hard name, it's a mouthful, sorry about that. And Eleanor Ott placed second in the regional meet and continued on to win the Michigan Interscholastic Horsemanship Association Division D this year. And whereas Eleanor Ott was nominated for the M I H A Championship Meets Sportsmanship Award and was honored as the runner-up. And whereas Liliana and Eleanor have set the bar high as the team moves forward in competition and in sportsmanship, now therefore I, Angela Sword Heath, Mayor of the City of Adrian, Michigan, do hereby congratulate the Adrian High School Equestrian Team on their state championship and numerous other accomplishments and look for, look forward to seeing the program continue. Can we get a big round of applause? I do have to say, this is a, this is a. So this is great and they are very excited that you are carrying this legacy on of the equestrian team and growing it and winning all these great awards, so. Thank you very much and great job, congratulations. We also have a proclamation for Veterans Day, which is next Monday, November 11th. Whereas World War I officially ended when the Treaty of Versailles was signed on June 28th, 1919 in Versailles, France. However, fighting ceased seven months earlier when an armistice temporary cessation of hostilities between the Allied Nations and Germany went into effect on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. And whereas for that reason, November 11th, 1918 is generally regarded as the end of the war to end all wars. And whereas in November of 1919, President Wilson proclaimed November 11th as the first commemoration of Armistice Day, which primarily became a day set aside to honor veterans of World War I. And whereas in 1954, President Dwight D Eisenhower issued the first Veterans Day proclamation and November 11th became a day to honor American veterans of all wars. And whereas Veterans Day is a day to honor and remember the sacrifices of all those who fought to preserve our freedoms, now therefore I, Angie Sword Heath, Mayor of the City of Adrian, Michigan, do hereby recognize and honor all veterans in our community and nationwide and proclaim November 11th, 2024 as Veterans Day and encourage the citizens of Adrian to recognize the courage and sacrifice of these patriots. At this time, we will have public comment for items that are on the agenda. We will start inside the city chambers first, just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and place of residence. When we have exhausted all comment inside the chambers, we will then open it up to Zoom participants.
Kent Tokars, Adrian, Michigan. Can you hear me? I'm here to speak about the resolution to set a public hearing in regards to Special Assessment District for DDA Parking. I believe that the resolution should be taken back and updated before the commission sets a public hearing. First of all, the resolution is missing information. The DDA specifically requested the parking lot that was built behind the Presbyterian Church and it is not listed on the resolution when it improves the value of the properties. The DDA requested dumpster enclosures that are not available to the general public and their cost has not been identified in the resolution. The DDA specifically requested electrical upgrades for food trucks and electrical vehicles that are missing from the resolution. The resolution did not include a breakdown of revenues and expenses. This is a good thing, this is a good thing, but the commissioners may want to ask the city administrator why church street residents were not provided with something similar as far as costs goes with their project. My comments specific to identified resolution costs are as follows. And some of these are based upon my time at Adrian Public Schools where I oversaw snow removal. The cost for an six-inch snow event with salting at Justa High School came in around $3,000 back in 2011. The city in the resolution identifies wages at $3,000. This seems to be more in line with $25,000. Salt in the SAD is valued at $2,000. The SAD is missing line items for a loader to load salt, excavator, four plow, four excavators, four plow trucks and one pickup truck. The SAD is missing a line item for a bucket truck. The SAD is missing the cost for internet service for the DDA requested digital sign banners. The Special Assessment District is missing the DDA share of the $80,000 cost for steel bullards. The SAD is missing the cost of spring flowers, watering, water trucks and overtime to water. The resolution is missing the cost of holiday decorations for Halloween, Thanksgiving and Christmas. Where is the line item from the DPW labor to put up DDA decorations when they could be out fixing our roads or collecting leaves for a couple of additional months? Where's the line for the Winter Street bailout and the Winter Street environmental cleanup or the Winter Street design costs? What portion of the town square project is the DDA picking up? Finally, the SAD has been submitted specific to the removal of parking meters. Did it dawn on any of the commissioners that, and the city commission to ask to have a survey conducted to see if this is what downtown businesses still want? Is that my time? I believe that this is a rubber stamp and that you should ask citizens if they want a survey.
My name is Sarah Lynn Tapp. I'm a resident and homeowner and voter in the city of Adrian. My husband and I decided about five and a half years ago to sell our family home in Tecumseh Township and buy a house near Adrian College where we met almost 35 years ago. All three of our children also graduated from Adrian College and two of them own houses near campus. As a resident for the past five years, I've noticed that most people do not get involved with city politics, myself included. I'm sure there are any number of reasons for this lack of participation, ranging anywhere from trust in their elected officials all the way down to apathy. But on the issue at hand, the point of sale ordinance, neither of those is the case. Voting residents in the city do care and they have worked hard to make their voices heard. As soon as the repeal petition was made available, my husband, daughter and I began hitting the streets in our neighborhood. Because of a previously planned vacation, we were only available to canvas for the first 11 days. We knocked on doors and talked to our neighbors nine out of those 11 days. Only taking the Saturday of Adrian College's homecoming off and a Tuesday later when it poured rain. We knocked on hundreds of doors. Five people said they weren't interested in talking with us about the issue. Over 20 asked us to come back so that their spouse who wasn't currently home could also sign our petition. More than 10 said, please be sure you go to such and such a house because I know they are interested in signing. Several people even asked for yard signs. Four people told us they were not registered voters and though they are not, were not eligible to sign our petition, we talked with them about the importance of voting and left literature so they could inform themselves on how to register. Only two people, two, said they did not want to sign our petition because they agreed with the ordinance. We walked for miles and miles, talked for hours, met our neighbors and bonded over an issue that affects us all and it was worth it. These petition signatures, over 2,300 of them, represent Adrian City residents who are demanding that you, their elected representatives, listen to them. In June, we spoke up, but we weren't listened to. So now we put the work in to bring the voice of the electorate to you now in November. Repeal the point of sale ordinance, that's what the people of Adrian are telling you. They are your constituents, they voted you into your positions and now they're asking you to actually represent them, listen and repeal the point of sale ordinance.
Harry Smith, City of Adrian. I'm here today as a representative of the task force committed to repealing the point of sale ordinance in Adrian. We recently submitted a petition with 2,273 valid signatures from city residents who have made it clear that they want this ordinance repealed. This number isn't just a statistic, it's the collective voice of our community telling you that the ordinance is not in our best interest. At prior meetings, many of us voiced these same concerns and yet the commission moved forward with the ordinance after a four to three vote, disregarding the input and the pleas of the people who voted them into office. Now with 2,273 validated signatures, you have yet another opportunity to show that you are truly listening to the voices of those who elected you. It should be a wake-up call that in our city's history, we have never had an ordinance repeal effort like this. The people of Adrian are speaking loud and clear, asking you to represent their interests. We all agree that Adrian has a blight issue and we want to work toward a cleaner, safer community. However, the POS ordinance is not the way to achieve that. This policy unfairly places the responsibility on homeowners and sellers, forcing costs and burdens onto people who are simply trying to sell their property. The ordinance doesn't address the root causes of blight and instead punishes those who are already doing their part to maintain or sell their homes in good faith. These are just some of the reasons that people felt compelled to join our repeal effort and sign the petition. Putting this issue to a future vote would only delay what is abundantly clear. Our community wants to repeal the point of sale ordinance. The support for this position or petition has been overwhelming and it's not often we see such widespread agreement across the community. Repealing the ordinance now would demonstrate that the commission respects the voices of the 2,273 city residents who sign the petition and that you're willing to act in the best interest of your constituents. Additionally, ignoring the overwhelming consensus of the referendum petition process and results and leaving it up to a vote would show a gross lack of judgment and misuse of the time and resources of this commission to put any more effort into developing an ordinance that will be voted down by a landslide at the polls. Let's focus on real targeted solutions to address blight. Solutions that don't unfairly penalize homeowners, but work with the community to achieve meaningful change and keep our housing market fair for all. I urge you to repeal this ordinance today and restore our trust in the commission's ability to represent our interests. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Angela Garza and I live in the city of Adrian. I'm going to address the point of sale ordinance. I've lived in Adrian for 22 years and I am not a Realtor. I have always wondered how and why blight hasn't been properly addressed in Adrian and I am not referring to residential blight. That's why I was so perplexed at how quickly this ordinance, addressing only residential blight, was introduced and passed. As a citizen, I felt blindsided and a bit betrayed by those for whom I voted to represent me. For a short while, I felt powerless and trapped. I live in a modest house and it's taken a long time to build back its value since the housing crash of 08. Now in this economy and still feeling the effects of inflation, if I choose to sell my house, I may encounter yet another financial burden. But I digress. For the first time since I've lived in Adrian, instead of complaining, I got out there and worked for change. I collected signatures and in doing so, made connections with fellow citizens who felt the same as me. I collected several sheets of signatures from people who live on the east and west side of town, from people of a variety of socioeconomic backgrounds and from people of differing political stances. Fun fact, every person I met with who hadn't done so already, signed my petitions. Another fun fact, the vast, vast majority hope for a repeal versus a vote. It was refreshing to be on the same page with so many people, especially in these divided times. City commissioners, I know that you listened to people speak about this ordinance before you passed it. Maybe you thought that their voices didn't reflect the majority of voters in our community. But now we have 2,273 signatures, 2,273 voices. I implore you to set aside your pride and hear us. I urge you to repeal this ordinance as quickly as you passed it. Thank you.
I don't have a prepared speech. My name is Wes Tapp. I'm a resident of the city of Adrian. I wanted to just briefly talk about the Sam Buford woodworking facility that came up at the last meeting. I think that was a very good conversation, but I would encourage the commission to consider what is the long-term impact of taking out a piece of green property out there that's untouched and turning it into something that's a development. We have many other facilities in the city of Adrian that could be easily converted to a woodworking institute. And there are other places that we can house students. I would also consider, I would ask the commission to consider what is the incremental revenue value to the city of Adrian? When we're talking about a very small institute for students that are going to come in year over year, are they really going to bring that much more revenue to the, to the city? So thank you.
Hi, my name's Greg Judkins. I live here in the city of Adrian. I've been here over 30 years. I've been before you before for another issue and found you not hearing the citizens. Does not surprise me that you did what you did and it wouldn't surprise me if you don't vote on this. We've been here 30 years and we would not have been able to buy our house under your new POS. We bought our house on a land contract. Everybody told us it was a fixer-upper. Well, to be honest with you, it's kind of more of a terror downer, but we've been working years on it, always upgrading it. Um, another example of somebody, we have neighbors who've been in ill health for five years. The wife passed away three months ago. Their house is in, or repair. If they have to sell it, how are they going to sell it? My wife and I talked to over 150 people. We had two people want more information. We talked to them, never strong, strong-armed anybody. We only had one person we talked to that did not sign this petition. You need to listen to the voices of this community. You don't need to get into our pockets for a little more money, you've done that enough. We've all had inflation hit us. You guys should learn to live with inflation too. Please back off from the citizens, you're taking too much money from us.
Items on the agenda. But there is an opportunity at the end for general. There'll be an opportunity at the end. Hearing no more public comment inside the city chambers, is there any public comment on Zoom regarding items on the agenda?
I'd like to say something. Can, can you hear me?
Please state your name and place of residence.
Um, Kim Niebel and I live in Adrian. And I also don't have a prepared speech, but I wanted to add to the voices against the point of sale ordinance. I was having lunch with a friend the other day and we were talking about the way corporations have taken over the real estate. Corporations are buying up homes and that's affecting the cost and the availability of middle-class homes. And he told me that they're, they're not moving the homes, that they're buying them and letting them sit because they can afford to do that. And by buying up the available homes in a low inventory anyway, they can manipulate the housing, the cost of housing. And we all know that there's a housing crisis for middle-class homes. And I think that this ordinance will contribute to that because a corporation can buy up the home at a lower price because the seller is gonna think that they can't sell it because of this point of sale ordinance. So I think that you're contributing to a crisis that we're already experiencing. Also, buying a home and fixing it up is something that a lot of skilled workers have been doing for years. It's ever since I was a kid, I remember friends, dad, they'd buy a distressed property and fix it up. It was something they could do to earn extra money in addition to working their regular jobs because they could do it on weekends and evenings and the family could come over so they weren't always away from the family. I noticed in signing the petitions that a lot of the places that you could sign were real estate offices. So that made it clear to me that the Realtors were concerned about this too. So you're probably having a negative effect on their business. Adrian's a fine city, but we're like right out in the middle of the country. There's not a lot of industries available for people to work at jobs. So you're hurting the Realtors, you're hurting the home flippers.
Your time is, your time is up, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, um, my name is Mattson Garza and I live in the city of Adrian. I would attend in person, but I'm currently attending college in the Boston area. I'd like to address the city commission regarding the point of sale ordinance passed earlier this year. I want to start off by saying I really appreciate the commissioners working to address the blight issue in our town. Our mall looks haunted and not just because Halloween just passed. In fact, I'm actually a fan of the recent vacant buildings ordinance. That being said, I don't feel the point of sale ordinance is the right solution for our community. I believe it was written with good intentions, but it ultimately punishes the citizens it is supposed to help. I don't think it is right to condition one's right to buy and sell their home on passing inspection. Although there exist homes in poor condition due to laziness, many are in poor condition because repairs are expensive. I believe the problem of blight in our city should be addressed by helping those in need, not penalizing them. As a result, this summer, I became one of the founding members of the Adrian Community for the repeal of the point of sale ordinance. Being largely away from town for academic purposes, I was unable to do much on the ground, but I helped in any way I could. The movement I saw in my absence was astounding. I understand the commission was doing their best to help the city, but the community has spoken. I do not believe there are 2,000 Realtors in this town. As others have mentioned, we received more signatures in our petition than there were votes for any of the members of this commission. I would deeply respect any commissioners that have the courage to change their minds and listen to their constituents' voices. Open-mindedness is the single biggest quality I value as a voter. I implore you to immediately repeal the point of sale ordinance and end the tension that has built up in our town. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, we will move on to our work-study session. So I will turn it over to our city administrator, Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. So the first item for us to discuss tonight is the Sam Buford Woodworking Institute's proposal to acquire land at the Witt Farm. Uh, circulated to you, um, some term sheet items that we previously discussed with the, with the prospective purchaser with Mr. Barnett. And I think the, the task at hand for tonight is to talk about if indeed you, you're willing to sell this land to them, which it seemed from our discussion last time you were, then what would the terms of that sale be? As I say, I, I proposed some things in there, but some of these things need input from you. And so I'll go, go over what I, what was in the term sheet that I sent you for the benefit of the audience and, and for your own review. And then I'd ask you to discuss, uh, uh, what you think should be different or whether you're in accord with those things. So what I proposed for you is that the wooded area that we've talked about, which is majority of the site, again, the total site is about 21. Again, the total site is about twenty-one and a quarter acres. That's subject to being surveyed more precisely. Uh, most of that's in the woods. Uh, my suggestion to you is that that could be uh, provided to them at a nominal price rationale for that is really that we'd never actively marketed that area. Uh, it wasn't in our contemplation as part of the property that we, that we would sell for economic development purposes. However, as to the farmland, and this is in accord with discussions that we've had with Sam Buford. Uh, I think that price should be more reflective of market value. Uh, I think there's about four acres that would fall into that category. However, I did not propose a number there. I think we talked last time about what we've been offered uh, for other land on that site, although those, that sale did not come to fruition. We had an offer at one point of twenty thousand dollars per acre. Uh, your deal as such with the Humane Society recognizing that it was a not-for-profit entity was at a price of eight thousand dollars per acre uh, for upland, but that was quite some time ago. It was probably four years ago when, when you had those discussions. Uh, the idea would be that we would offer an option that would be uh, exclusive to the prospective purchaser for a year. And then convert to a right of first refusal for another three years uh, to give them time to raise the money to actually purchase the property. Price of the option itself would be relatively nominal of a thousand dollars. You're needing to be some consideration for such an agreement. Is to access. We would expect the purchaser to um, provide for access to the property that they want to use, although we would use our best efforts to cause the entry stub road that we've been designing uh, to come to fruition uh, with assistance from the LDFA, which we've discussed with the LDFA that is designed and in for permitting uh, insofar as that stub goes. However, there is an opportunity, as I think we discussed last time, uh, for access for them through uh, the intermediate school district site, which probably is going to be much more beneficial than trying to come in off of the front edge of the Witt Farm. The option would be transferable only to a related entity. So if they created a property specific entity to take down the land, uh, they could transfer that, but no other entity could they transfer the option rights to. We provided, we suggested providing for a renewal of uh, the right of first refusal for up to two years for an additional thousand dollar fee if they were not able to take down the land within the first four years. Uh, purchaser would cause the property to be surveyed and develop a legal description, which would be incorporated into purchase documents. Form of purchase agreement would be added as an exhibit to the option, which would include the purchase price. Uh, the fact the title is non-transferable until such time as contemplated improvements are completed. Construction would have to begin within eighteen months after taking title. Substantial construction of the facility completed in thirty-six months after taking title. Entitled uh, to the property would be subject to a reversionary interest in the city. Uh, if any of those terms weren't agreed to, again, the idea being that we're uh, offering a good deal on this land, but that is so that this particular uh, use could be put there. Uh, it's not so that the land could be transferred to another for another purpose. Uh, so I know Mr. Barnett is here. If he can approach uh, and be available for any questions that you might have and express his position on those terms, which I know he has seen before. Uh, but with that, I would open it up for your discussion and particularly as to the to the price that you would be interested in as it relates to the farmland portion of the more marketable portion of the site. Anything you want to add, Luke, before they discuss?
Nope.
Good. Commissioners? Don't all talk at once.
Turn your mic on.
Thank you. So we talk about market value. What do you think market value would be for that property?
Yeah, I think market value is twenty thousand an acre. That's what I think we've been offered in the past for, for such land. Now, whether, you know, you want to make a deal in recognition of the fact that it's nonprofit, as you did with the Humane Society. We're not, it, as with all, I would say, as with most property sales, we're not in it for the, you know, sale price of the land. We, we want to encourage something to be built there. And this deal is structured to encourage something to be built there. That's the economic development benefit. So I, I think the purchase price is somewhat uh, insignificant in the grand scheme of things, although you know, I, I do think that there ought to be an incentive to use as little of the upland or the open land as possible.
So the, the twenty thousand per acre suggestion or thought in the eight thousand per acre, that was for the farmland area, which is about four acres. So some, if, if this is what we're thinking, it would be somewhere between eight and twenty thousand dollars for four acres. And then the wooded area, which makes up the bulk of the land that, that Luke would be able to use a nominal fee. Uh, you know, I don't know, is that like?
I mean, it could be a dollar. I mean, like I say, it's really when you it's a token thing at that point. Again, your point is to have this built there. Uh, so the, the prices per, per acre price that I'm suggesting, so it'd be eight times four or twenty times four as the case may be. You know, and that's, like I say, that's what we negotiated with others in the past. If this were a strict land sale like we did with Marvin Farm, for those of you remember that, uh, where we're just about selling it to a speculator, then I think the purchase price is much more significant because we didn't restrict that land to being built upon for a particular use within a defined frame of time. Uh, that is not the case here. We're proposing that it's only for this use and that it's, that this use has to happen once the option is exercised fairly quickly. Uh, you know, and so I, I, I do think that's the main issue, much more so than the purchase price. Purchase price for the farmland, I think, is only relevant as an incentive to use as little of the farmland as possible because we want it for economic development purposes.
At the risk of rehashing what I said during the last meeting, I'm going to anyways. So it's within the LDFA. And that was created ten years ago to capture taxes and development and new develop, no, new building, new building? Is that how you say it?
Uh, yeah, it's, well, it's new taxable value, but I, I would say its purpose is, is to promote development and economic activity more particularly than development. One of the tools it uses is the tax increment financing district that was created. You know, that does allow for that tax capture on new taxable value.
And so that land was meant for taxable properties. With Sam Buford being a non-tax fund, that's a, that's where the sticking point comes in a little bit. Uh, being a good steward of land, the city of Adrian doesn't own a lot of land anymore. We don't own very many acres anymore um, from recent sales. So we have to balance wanting you to stay in the city of Adrian versus what do we do with tax dollars? And is this a good use of tax dollars? However, we've owned this land for a long time and have not had a whole lot of interest. We've had some interest, but nothing has come to fruition. So again, it's that balance of if we get something in there, maybe other things will come that are taxable. Um, and that's I think for me, I, I want something to be built in there. And if this, and I want you to stay in the city of Adrian. I do not want you to leave. So I'm willing to take that risk and that chance of um, using a limited city property to have you stay in the city. Now saying that, how much is that value? How much is the land value? It, as realtors in the audience can say, the, my understanding is it's only valued at what someone's willing to pay for it. Um, it, I've heard that said from other realtors before. If, if you can put a price on anything and if no one's willing to pay for it, is that really the value of that property or that land? So where are we at with what we want? Um, just doing my own research on acreage for um, for farmland in the state of Michigan, actually specifically in Lenoy County, it's, it's about seventy-four hundred dollars is what the going rate is, if I did my research correctly. So that eight thousand dollars might have been, you know, something that was, uh, you know, feasible a couple of years ago. Twenty thousand dollars was what someone was interested in paying us a couple of years ago. So that's where I am interested in staying in that seventy-five hundred to twenty thousand dollar range. Um, and it's for only four of the acres, not for all of it.
I too am interested in seeing them stay in Adrian. It isn't, we're not selling farmland for farmland. We're selling farmland. It's going to be developed. Uh, and it's hard to, and I, I think we've had talks before together privately. And we can only speculate what kind of revenue this could generate in the community. We can be optimistic and excited about it and, uh, and I am. And I, I think that it's something that would be very good uh, for us to consider. And on another note, how, is the wooded area going to be somewhat protected? That it will not be destroyed or changed and?
Well, I think, I mean, clearly some of the woods are going to, trees are going to be removed, you know, to facilitate construction of their facility. You had the presentation last time from their architect where he talked about selectively calling out trees and, and make, and trying to, you know, I do believe we're, and if you wanted that to be part of the the, the real estate deal, we could do that, but I do believe they're very interested in preserving as many trees as they can also.
For walking paths and bike.
Well, there, there's the use of other woods that is adjacent, which is also uh, part of, you know, what they're interested in. I don't think they have to own it for that to be true. We, we would be open to them, um, having an easement or other access. It may, it may be public land at that point um, to use those woods. But as it relates to the part they're purchasing, you know, they'll be free to do as they deem necessary to construct their facility, but they had a plan they showed you that uh, involved citing it within as many of the preserved trees as they could.
Luke, you correct me if I'm wrong. The presentation showed you leaving as many trees as possible outside of the areas that you needed to build, but absolutely that you were leaving all of the trees. And is there potential to use the trees that you remove in excuse me, the work that you do or, or construction, et cetera?
Yeah, absolutely. So to answer your first question, we, our goal is to preserve as many trees as possible and not only uh, preserve what's there, but also to bring the woods out into the farm field a little bit to go around our building. So plant more trees than we cut down. And the second question, um, our institute, uh, sustainability is very important to us and using the resources that the city has. Um, or anybody has as far as uh, woods and timber, and we would definitely want to take advantage of that uh, in the construction of our new facilities.
Madam Mayor, if I could. I don't think any of us were on the commission when we first talked to the Humane Society. I could be wrong. Mary was, okay. So we had an agreement there for eight thousand dollars an acre, uh, for many more acres than this property is. Uh, we did have an offer for twenty thousand dollars. Neither the, one of those came to fruition. We were willing to sell to another nonprofit, the Humane Society, at eight thousand dollars an acre. And I would be comfortable with that same price for this, for this um, proposal. That's where I'm at.
And that's exactly where I've, I've given this a lot of thought and also done some research and I really feel that that eight thousand dollars an acre for those four acres is right in line because that's what we were doing with the Humane Society. And um, I just, even though property values have gone up since four years ago, I, I don't know, that land hasn't really changed and we don't see any movement there. And I just feel like this is something that we, I, I don't feel like we need to gouge and, and go higher than that is, is my opinion.
Is there anybody that doesn't feel like eight thousand is a fair price for the farmland? Were there any of the other terms that any of the commissioners had concerns about or, uh, that you had concern about, Luke?
Nope.
Well, do you think it can be built within three years or at least part of it built within three years? Right? Is, is that my understanding is that there would have to be?
I use the term substantial completion.
Right.
You know, and that's that is meant to be something that's achievable. So if you don't think it's achievable, tell us. You know, the idea being that, you know, it, it needs to be built in a timely manner or goes back to the city. And, and this is after the money is raised and the land is taken out. The option is good for four, the option is good and, and or right of first refusal is good for up to six, up to six years. But four years initially.
Okay. So that's a reasonable amount of time for you to raise all of the funds you need and to start building something, do you believe?
I believe so, yes. Yes. And uh, we've already began this process. Our, our architect joined us last week. He's already began uh, the programmatic part of the build. Um, and the next step is site selection.
Okay.
I think the last time we discussed, you actually did prioritize when we were talking privately, that there are some first steps and second and thirds. And uh, I think what is mentioning here is that we see the first steps and the seconds going and, and maybe not the third, but at that time we should see these things progressing and moving. And I, I'm confident with that. I think it's the way you explained it to me privately. I think it makes real sense.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, if you're all in accord with terms we proposed, then what we'll do is we'll draft a resolution for next time. Um, and uh, you can approve uh, uh, the documents we would need and uh, we can move forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Our next item is the point of sale referendum petition. I did not make copies as there are quite a number of sheets. We do have one, if you want to see it, that Michelle could put on the screen, but uh, we have a memo from our city clerk who can't be here for uh, medical reasons. But I will summarize it for you. So we received uh, on October eighth, a referendary petition that uh, had as its caption, the following proposal. The repeal of the Adrian City Ordinance twenty-four dash oh oh two. An ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances, Chapter ten, to add Article six, also known as point of sale inspection approved by the Adrian City Commissioners on June third, twenty twenty-four. This referendary petition seeks to remove Article six in its entirety along with the required fee associated with the inspection and the certification. and the certification process known as the Residential Dwelling Certificate Program. The ordinance can be found at, and then the petition listed a web address. So our clerk canvassed the signatures on the petition and found that were, there were two thousand two hundred and seventy-three total valid signatures, which which were present of the twenty four hundred and fifty-nine signatures that were submitted. So that exceeds ten percent of the registered voters as of the last city election, which is the measure uh contained within your charter. But it's not more than twenty-five percent of the number of signatures, which would cause the uh, operation of the ordinance to be suspended. Since there were a sufficient number of signatures present, giving extra time to correct the signature errors on the remaining signatures was deemed irrelevant to the result. And so uh, the clerk uh has moved past that provision. So it is now up to the city commission within thirty days to choose one of the following options. To repeal the ordinance referred to in the petition or to determine to submit the proposal provided or in the petition to the electors. So if you choose to submit the proposal to the electors, then it needs to be included on the ballot at the next regularly scheduled city election. So as of this time, that would be November fourth, twenty twenty five, unless there's a need for a primary, in which case it would be August fifth, twenty twenty five. Alternatively, city commission may in its discretion decide to hold a special election. So I would suggest to you that you have discussion on your proposed course of action tonight. And then uh, set the matter over until your next meeting uh for the formal action, whatever form you choose, whether it be a repeal or, or setting the matter for election. We can prepare a resolution for you for that time. But uh, this item is on uh, this evening's agenda for discussion. So I would turn it over to the commission.
Mr. Elliott, uh, you said within thirty days of, of when? When, when it was, I just want to be sure that if we do wait to do anything in two weeks.
Yeah, my understanding is she didn't cite the charter language and I don't have it right here in front of me. But my understanding is that thirty days runs from the time that she presents it to you, which would be tonight.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I'm in favor of having a motion at our next meeting to take a formal vote, just to get this going, get it completed, get a decision made.
Well, if, if the commission indicates to us which direction you want to go amongst the two options, then we'll have a, a resolution at your next meeting uh, they, to that, you know, to that effect.
I don't have an answer for that. I, can you put two resolutions? I mean, I don't, what can you do?
I could, uh, we could bring two resolutions. Uh, if you're wanting to have two resolutions, then I guess I need some guidance on when the date for an election would be. You know, amongst the choices that are available, special election, presume a primary, or that could be a special election in August or general election in November.
How much would an election, if we ran it, cost the city?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a sense of that. I, I would have to ask Christie and get back to you on that.
And I did ask Christie a couple of months ago and she told me it was about twenty five thousand dollars. About twenty five thousand dollars. There's a lot of printing, mailing, paying of workers, renting.
I'm gonna ask you to keep it down during our meeting. No, thank you. No, thank you. No, thank you.
So. Yeah, that if, as long as that's, I, I'm pretty sure that's what she told me because mainly because of all the mailing costs and the printing costs. So.
Yeah, I would believe that number.
Um, I, I would suggest we take the two weeks and think about it. And uh, really makes, you know, discern where we want to go with this. And you could, in that time, prepare two resolutions for us to vote on if that's what we want to do. Have we, we usually have a primary in August, don't we?
Uh, for a city election, we usually don't historically, but we did the last time. Uh, and I think we had a primary the time before that as well. So the last two city elections, we have had a primary. I think it would be fair to conclude that we might have a primary this time.
So if we did one resolution, I just want to be sure, one resolution to repeal it or immediately? And then one resolution to put it to a ballot vote in August, correct?
Right, those would be the two. Well, if you're.
If that's.
If you agree, August seems like the most likely time. If you're gonna have an election, then, but yes, those would be the two appropriate resolutions.
Can the resolution state the next um formal election? Or does it have to be August or November or? Can it state the next formal election in twenty twenty five? Or does it have to be, just in case we don't have a primary?
Because then we'd have to pay for a special.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we'll have to look into that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I want to consult with Christie and city attorney.
But your charter says it would be at the next election held in the city for any other purpose. So you, you could put that in a resolution.
Okay.
Okay, so it could just say, all right. Could that resolution also state, um, the one that would be on having the election? Could it also state about um putting a moratorium on fees until after that election?
Yeah, you have not set fees and, you know, if indeed you're going to put it on the ballot, then you would need to have, decide what you were gonna do about fees. And if you wanted to waive the fees until there were an election, that would be within your purview to do that.
Okay.
Either way, you're gonna have to do so, you know, unless you're repealing it at the next meeting, you're gonna have to do something about fees. Because we haven't set fees on the effective date of the ordinance since November thirtieth.
Is this something though that would be, need to be decided by then? Or could this be a decision on just on one of these two options and then work on that following, like the, the fees and all of that? I'm just asking, I didn't know.
We couldn't implement it until you set the fees. We're actually in that situation with vacant buildings. We probably should have had the fee resolution on this meeting. But um, we, we need to adjust the fees from uh, what they were previously, where they didn't contemplate their, the interior inspections. And so we'll have that next time as well. We'll have the vacant building fee ordinance or fee resolution for you. But, you know, I mean, to me, it would make sense to waive the fees until there's a, a decision. And so uh, you could do that next time.
So at the next meeting, we can expect two resolutions either to repeal or set for an election. And fee uh proposals or to discuss for both vacant building and for point of sale.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion? Is that, is that your direction? All right, while that ready for you next step. All right, moving on. Mayor asked that we have a discussion about barrier-free parking downtown as we've had some uh concerns about that. Uh, Matt Tomaszewski's here, uh, if you want to approach Matt. Or you can talk from over there if it's easier. Matt and I have talked about this a little bit. I mean, we do have barrier-free parking downtown, of course, in excess of what is required by uh the uh barrier-free code. But that is in our public parking lots. There's not a lot that's on the street, which I think is the issue that's come to your attention. But there are pitfalls with, with doing that. And I'll let Matt uh talk more about that.
So as Greg mentioned, um, we don't have a, a very many parking spaces on the street that are barrier-free. We do have one, uh, it's located um, right next to Phoenix Rising on uh West Mami. We did take a look at all of the uh handicap accessible parking uh spaces in our lots. Um, and in that picture there, everything circled and red. If Michelle can zoom in a little bit. So we have forty-one um accessible parking spots um out of the five hundred and seventy-five spaces that we have. Uh, that is nearly double the required amount uh, or the amount required that we need. Uh, so we do have plenty of parking available um in the lots. Uh, we do feel that it is safer um and uh easier to use uh in the lots than it would be on the street.
And what are some of the problems with providing it on the street, man?
Uh, you run into the challenges of um discharging them uh onto the, the sidewalks, which there's um tree boxes, there's benches, there's trash cans, there's flowers. Um, or into the street, which uh could cause a hazard. They would be on, on a, let's see, on Mami, there's uh some space in the bike lanes to discharge. And if anyone uses the bike lanes, there's the issue. Um, on Main Street, we obviously don't have bike lanes. So your, your uh access point is right into the, the lane of travel, which is uh a very terrible hazard. So um, again, it just feels like the uh, the best place for the accessible parking is um in the parking lots. It just, it seems safer. Um, it is, most of them are all near um the closest points to the uh, the back access to all the buildings downtown as well.
So kind of a theory for, you know, where we provide it downtown is that, you know, either there are pass-throughs, alleys through uh to the storefronts or I, and like in the case of this block, many of the entrances that are barrier-free are in the back of the building. The entrance of City Hall that's barrier-free is in the back of the building. Uh, Crosswell is at the back of the building, library is in the back of the building. You know, uh, the one block that doesn't have an alley, a public alley through it is the opposite block from us. But Gallery of Shops does have a barrier-free entrance on that backside of the building during business hours. You can pass through there or there is a private way through next to the Presbyterian Church. I think one of the concerns uh has been particularly about chambers. And of course, chambers is not accessible at the, our, our barrier-free entrance is in the rear. And there is one barrier-free parking spot in the, in the rear. But it's not accessible from the parking lot where the rest of those spots are. And so Matt, um, if, if you were gonna propose additional barrier-free parking accessible to chambers, where would it make sense to do that?
Uh, I think the, the spot that makes the most sense is uh, there's a spot right in front of the church out here. Um, there is, uh, it's, it's about a twenty-foot area that's hashed out up to the driveway.
To Broad Street for those online.
Broad Street right there, sorry. Um, and uh, we would have to provide a ramp um that is an end of state road. So we would have to get it uh designed and get a permit. Could cost us some money, um, but that would be probably the best option.
Like how much money? Do you have any idea?
Probably between five to ten thousand dollars installed, probably closer to fifteen. And that would give us one parking space.
A question I have is that it seems to me that none of the handicap parkings are locate, located in the middle of the block. So if you're gonna park on Main Street or those, you're, you're walking a block to get to a front store. Why can't we have barrier-free parking in the middle of blocks? So you're only walking at the most half of a block either way.
And, and that's where they would be proposed for is at um crosswalks. Um, that's where they're, they're um the best practice book. There's, there's no requirements for on-street accessible parking. Um, there's a best practice book to look at. Um, and they say make them as close to crosswalks as possible. So uh, we would look to put them at the end of the um, the roads and maybe um, well, North Main and East Mami have mid-block crossings, so we could look at those areas as well.
Because I, I really have concerns. There's one spot and then the ramp. And it's not exactly well-lit out there. And then I think the lack of for people at a commission meeting that want to come, that's one. But the other is we've got to move them where they're at to make them more consumer and citizen-friendly. But it, we, we've got to do a better job. We don't need to meet the minimum on this. We need to meet or exceed expectations on it.
And that we are, quite honestly, we're double what, what the requirement is.
Is this something though where we could add them where those crosswalks are and then take some out of those parking lots? Like I know we need some of them, but is that a possible option?
Yeah, that's an option, absolutely.
You know, Matt.
I wouldn't.
Go ahead, Mary.
Having them here on Mami Street with the bike lanes I think is a doable option if we did one on each side maybe of the um, by the crosswalk over there. But I have two adult children who live on Main Street in second floor apartments. And I visit them regularly. And to have my car door, me getting in and out of my car door on that street is very dangerous. Me as an able-bodied person. So I would be very cautious about putting them on Main Street. It would be great if we could, we just don't have the space. And I, I, I would be really, really concerned about putting them there. But here with the extra space for the bike lanes, yeah, I think that's doable.
And, and I agree with that completely because also by looking at that map, I know it just got taken back down. But by looking at that, the Main Street, they tend to have parking behind them. And it, it, where, like, look at us here, we don't have parking behind us. The, the library does, but it's kind of a far distance. The police station doesn't. So it seems like this block is the one, and even if you look like across the street as well, like this makes more sense to have it on the street, but definitely people really fly down Main Street as well. But, but it's also just, I don't know if it's very viable there. But they have a lot of parking that is pretty accessible on Main Street. It's Mami Street that I feel is the bigger issue and for, for that barrier-free. And, and maybe that is the option that we put it up there by that crosswalk. I, I took a look at it after um Greg had suggested that I, when I left City Hall, I looked at it and it, and it seems to make a good option. I mean, I know they have to get out of the car and go into that bike lane. But I mean, people aren't supposed to be driving in that bike lane anyways in order to get to that, that curb cut, but.
Uh, another observation that I had, and I understand the, the issue on Main Street. We do have that crosswalk on North Main, that first block. We don't have one on South Main. And the only reason I bring it up is in the very near future, we're gonna have the town square. We're gonna have the Park House. We're gonna have the Seasons. It would seem to me that there are gonna be people who are gonna want to go back and forth across the street, whether it's handicap or not. I think we're gonna need a crosswalk down there, so I'm just throwing that out for you to consider in the future.
We're already discussing that as part of the town square project.
Appreciate that. News me. But yeah, I, I think that, you know, I understand that this building is handicap accessible. I understand the back. Also understand that at least one commissioner tried to get in the back door and it was locked tonight. But.
Well, but there's a bell, right?
So who, who answers the bell?
We, I, I've answered the bell.
Okay. That's good. The sign on the door up front telling people who can't get up the steps that the handicap is in the back, probably not. Either not needed or a different solution closer to the street might, might help that. I wish there was a way, I wish we could look and see if there's a way to do something with a ramp to the front entrance, whether the long small slope up the broad seat side of the building and then over. I don't know if that's even a possibility, but in a good, in a perfect world, that's what I'd like to see.
I would imagine a ramp to this building would be very, very challenging, just based on the ramp to the Armory. If you've ever used that ramp, it is exceptionally long in length. Not an engineer. My first choice would be to look at putting two, one on each side of the street right across from this, right next to the crosswalk.
But could we look at putting a sign down on the actual, like, ground, like, maybe down by bushes or the flowers down here, or something to tell people where the handicap access is to this building? Yeah, because I was, I was even questioning if we could do a ramp. But I mean, I'm not an engineer, but I also know that landing out there is very tiny. And that is, I mean, I can barely get in sometimes if there's a couple of us trying to get in the stairs on that landing. So I had a feeling it was already a huge issue, just because that's not very large right there. But at least if we have the signage, it's not great, but we are working with a historical downtown and historical old buildings and, you know, and having that option. But I think we definitely need those spaces on the street here on East Mami, in my opinion.
Perfect, thank you.
Hey, I mean, I would note that they, that they, I had the building official look at the access in the back, and he said it was compliant. I think it would be advantageous to have another spot available that you could get back there besides the one. There used to be two, and years ago, a generator was put in one of them. So placing that with one on Broad might be also a good idea, I would say. All right, any of the commissioners have other items for the work session? Not mayor, I'll turn it back to you for the regular meeting.
Moving on to the consent agenda, may I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gausse?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes. At this time, we will begin general public comment. We will start inside the city chambers first. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and place of residence. After we have exhausted all public comment inside the chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants.
Keith Miller, City of Adrian. I want to thank you for doing the handicap parking on the street. I really appreciate going above and beyond what you're doing right now. I have probably more metal in me than most cars do. And I still have to get more metal put in me, because I have two more joints that have to be replaced. And by no means is it even easy climbing stairs, but it's more easier climbing these stairs than it is actually to walk from the back parking lot all the way around here to get into that back steps. And, you know, from walking from the four corners down here to here is even a chore. And Mr. Schwartz can tell you, the last time he was here in the meeting, you know, I'm no fast walker. I'm at a snail's pace. And I appreciate you trying to accommodate the handicap parking. And the point of sale, I just wish you guys would listen to what your constituents are asking of you. That's all I have to say.
Good evening, Gail Dunway, City of Adrian. While we're on this, or just to continue our talk about sidewalks and safety, we have an unfinished project, I believe I brought this up maybe over a month ago. Last year's project on Mami Street, we still have one corner. Mami and McVicker, it's the northwest corner. No sidewalks. It's mirror image. The northeast corner is just fine. You replaced it, you don't replace the northwest corner. I nearly fell in the other day walking the dog. I thought, oh, it must be finished by now. No, it's not. I took pictures, and one of your other commissioners has also gone by. He's not here tonight and taking pictures. So let's, this is not ADA compliant. Let's get it fixed. Spend any more tax money, any more new projects, let's finish our unfinished projects. All of you who work in the schools, you know, when kids came to you, can I do extra credit? No, do your regular assignments first, then we'll think about extra credit. So let's get this taken care of. Also, continuing on with the issue of blight, there was a house, the last gentleman knows it very well, corner of Croswell and Chestnut. It was ordered by Judge Sheddler to be down within a month. That was several months ago. So we need to take some real action, not just talk about. I'm tired of hearing talk, I'm tired of surveys. Get it done.
Name is David Kowalewski, and I got a few items.
Can you state your place of residence?
To Combsy.
Thank you.
I own houses here.
Thank you, that's all.
Yeah, several houses. All right, did all the lead water pipes ever get removed? Nobody knows. What hours are you in City Hall that I come down there and talk to you, mayor? No answer there either, huh? See, must have ran out of answers. I got this guy Jake Randell doing inspections, and he's got a bunch of stuff wrote down here. Says spoke alarms, missing stuff like that. I rented out all the spoke alarms were in there, and the oxygen, and the the carbon monoxide. That was all put in there, I don't know where it's at. I have to go back and check and find out. Then he's got floorboards or rafter, yeah. The sagging, he doesn't say where. Where do you look for that? I don't know, isn't with him. So. So anyhow, I had a house burnt down, they said he took thirteen thousand dollars of my insurance money. All right? So now I put another place on there and had it dug out. There's chunks of concrete buried in there, in the hole where the where the foundation goes. So there, got the foundation in there and had to get the concrete out of there. They piled it on the back fence and covered it with dirt. And that cost me seven thousand two hundred dollars to get rid of that. Who's the inspector? I asked her, who's the inspector? Nobody knows. I got a dollar in my pocket, you guys could pass the buck if you want. But no answers. How about you, Burke? Have I got a case to sue the city or not? I kind of figured as the way it's going to go.
Hello, Wookiee Ramos, I'm a resident here in Adrian. I just want to say a couple of things. One, the point of sale, I hope you do listen to the massive amounts of signatures you got, especially considering how voter turnout does tend to be here locally. And also, on that note, I hope everyone's already turned in their absentee ballots, voted early. I hear a lot of people did, which is wonderful, and I hope that you all make out to Election Day if you haven't already voted. And thank you very much.
Of course, I'm not prepared to talk, but I want to say something. First of all, I really appreciate.
Can you say your name?
I'm sorry, that's okay. Nancy Durmeier, and I live in Adrian. I want, my husband is very handicapped, he's still a tad mobile. I volunteer at the Croswell a lot. Bringing him downtown is the most dangerous thing I could ever do, partially because of spacing. But more than that, the lighting. And I know that's very expensive, I know, but I just panic every time I have to take him out of the car that someone is going to hit him. At night, at this time of night, it is like a road race, and this is Mami, of course. Just very, very concerning. And I had mentioned another time about the the dog park, et cetera. There is no handicapped accessibility there, and I, we spoke about it before, and I know that it's not easy. But in, in my mind, fresh eyes, if we look at things with fresh eyes and pretend, God bless you, that you're you're handicapped or you use some kind of handicap disability type chair or whatever, you can get a better picture of what's needed, it's very difficult. We might be compliant, but is it functional for everyone? I know that everyone's doing their best they can. Basically, that's my my thing, but I I'm grateful that you're talking about the handicap piece, because there are so many folks who are handicapped. And I, I greatly appreciate it. But I also want to say, if there's any opportunity for advertising, similar, I believe, to some of the baseball diamonds in different places, where business owners might be able to advertise, pay a fee, a hundred dollars for a sign or something, and to support some of these parks, especially the dog park. It is hard to sustain all these parks, I understand that, and I don't know where the funding comes from. But I think a lot of people would be very willing to support something like that, to support the city. It's just a thought. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Megan Greenwell, I'm a Realtor here in Michigan, in Adrian, and I also am a property owner. And I am also a representative for the point of sale, or the repeal of the point of sale ordinance. So I have a whole spiel written out, and I can start going through more reasons why I think the point of sale is a bad idea. I I was at the meeting and prior to the vote, and I know that you all heard countless people come up forward and and discuss it and say they were not, they were opposed to it. They thought it was a bad idea, would not fix the blight issue that you're concerned with. So, yeah, I could go through, you know, the burden on the seller, how it's not affordable, limiting affordable housing options for people, poor quality and short-term repairs done by sellers, all those good things. Also, I could talk about canvassing. So I went out and hit the pavement. I've never done anything like that before in my life. I'm not really a political person, but I went out and hit the pavement, and I went door to door, and I stood downtown and collected signatures. And most people, they either saw me and they had no idea what I was doing, or they saw me and they basically ripped the clipboard out of my hand. They were so excited to sign and have their voices count and heard. And obviously, our numbers were two thousand two hundred and seventy-three in total. Well, not counting the ones that, you know, didn't get fully, yeah, realized. But those signatures are all of the people that live here in Adrian. They are important voices that need to be heard. The people that signed, so those people all deserve to be taken seriously. I think that number speaks for itself. The people that, the people that voted, I believe this is true, the people that voted in last general election, there were less people that voted in that election than signed the petition in total. So if that's the case, these are the majority of your voters that are speaking against it. Sure, we can go and wait and and go to an election and and draw the process out longer, or we can hear the people for what it is and actually make, you know, take into consideration their voices. And it's something that Mattson brought up on on the screen, too. It's okay to change our minds, it's okay to be open, it's okay to take into consideration that maybe this wasn't the right thing, maybe we have to look at other options. So I hope you guys all think more carefully about it before the next meeting. Thank you.
Carrie Smith, City of Adrian. I don't have comments prepared and for this. I think the discussion was a little disappointing. We've been talking about this for months, and the city charter, we as the task force have done our due diligence and our research to see all of the different timelines, what's the end result of this? The goal is we want to move towards a solution to address blight that the community wants and will be engaged in. And we want to move forward. I listened to the commission meeting where this was voted. And Commissioner Roberts had made a comment of like, well, it passed, so let's not be divided, let's come together. My question for you to consider during these next two weeks is if the majority of the residents have spoken, and the majority of the residents who, like you said, could be apathetic towards city politics or not get involved. Gordon said, where are you, you know, all the other meetings, I wish you would come. So now we've taken a step in that direction and said, this is really important to us, and we really want you to hear us. And we don't know how many other ways we can say it, we've exhausted public comment, we've put signs in our yards, we've signed petitions, and now you want us to vote, too? I mean, we will. Those are how many signatures we got in twenty-one days. What will we do in a year? And I think the other thing to consider in this two weeks is ask yourself, if I voted yes on June third, what is preventing me from changing my mind? What is preventing me from taking what the community is telling me and trying to come at this from another angle? What do you lose? We win as a community when we are all on the same page. We have to set aside personal agendas. We have to look at what the collective majority of your constituents are saying, instead of just the very influential few who I know are in your ear. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, we will open it up to the Zoom participants. You will see the time on your screen. And for the record, please state your name and place of residence as well.
Hi, good evening, this is Lynn Punnett. I did not intend, from To Come See Township, but I work in Adrian. I didn't plan to speak tonight, but I do want to support what Gail Dunway brought before you. I work at Comstock School, and last week, a man fell at the corner of McVicker and East Mami as I was getting out of my truck. And I went and helped him up. And I've contacted Matt a couple of times, and he's always very responsive. I really appreciate that he always responds to my inquiries. But this corner is critical. We have to get this fixed. And I took pictures of it this morning and intended to reach out again. But Gail bringing it up tonight just really prompted me to bring it to your attention. We can't, it's November now, and we can't go any longer without that corner being completed and having proper ramps. It broke my heart when that man fell last week, and I had to help him up. So we've got to take care of that corner. Thanks very much. It broke my heart when that man fell last week and I had to help him up, so we've gotta take care of that corner. Thanks very much.
I would like to speak out about the point of sale.
State your name, please, and your place of residence.
I'm sorry, my name is Gigi Zubkey, Georgiana Zubkey. I live in Adrian, Michigan. Um, I think that we do have a big blight problem. I don't believe that the point of sale would take care of that. I think we need to utilize our code enforcement officers in mu- in a much better fashion. I think that they can drive around and they can see blight. Um, we're already paying them to do this job. I don't understand why it's not being done. And they should be able to, you know, take a section of town and drive around and see it. And then, you know, go from there to fix the blight. Cite those people or talk to those people or help them find a way to take care of the things that need to be done. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, are there any commissioner comments?
I believe that, uh, Veterans Day is coming up. We need to honor our veterans. But I've also been contacted about, I believe it's at ten o'clock at Oakwood Cemetery. They're going to have a formal ceremony out there for anybody in the public that would like to go to honor the veterans.
I think it's eleven. I think it's at eleven. I do believe, I could be wrong. I could be wrong.
Get there early.
All right, that's why. There we go. Um, I, I drive by, um, on my way to work. I work really close to McVicker and Mommy, East Mommy as well. So I drive by it every single day and it always worries me as well, but we did learn at our strategic planning the other day that we're having issues with sidewalks getting completed with contracts and, and contractors coming out and finishing it up. Um, can you speak to that at all? Cause I know Matt Tomazuski had to leave.
Yeah, I think we've just been waiting on our concrete contractor to do their work for this year, which includes a lot of these things. And, uh, they've kept delaying, uh, for one reason or another. Um, I don't, I don't, I don't know what they've promised us most recently, but there is a slew of concrete work that's still remaining to be done in this construction season.
Because we don't do that ourselves, correct? I'm just trying to make sure.
Yeah, we have a annual contract that we award for concrete work and it's the work associated with the roads, curbs and driveway approaches, but also sidewalk replacements.
But I do understand that concern. I see it every day and it, I wonder how children are walking to school, how people are getting down that street as well by on the, on that sidewalk, cause it's missing. It isn't even there. So we, we do hear you and hopefully we can get that resolved soon. May I get a motion to adjourn?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.